It is now seven o'clock and we will be starting the June 21st.
Attention.
Attention, please. Attention. It is now 7:00 PM. We will start the June 21st City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Hayes.
Here.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Our invocation will be given tonight by Father Tim O'Malley from the Most Blessed Trinity Paris at 450 Keller Avenue.
Good to be here with you. Father Tim O'Malley is the pastor of Blessed Trinity Paris here in Waukegan and delighted to be with you this evening and offer a prayer. Praise our God for many people who have helped us throughout the course of the past 15 months. On this day, the church remembers a young man who at the age of 22 had spent his life in service of people in the pandemic of his day, Aleutius Gonzaga, and we know him well because of the university named after him from Spokane. But we pray that the Lord may help all those who have, in their own efforts, served those who were sick, family members who have taken food and water and medicine, and indeed cared for those who were sick in their homes, nurses and healthcare workers and others who cared for patients in the hospitals. We give thanks to God for the many good things that they've been able to do to help the community over the course of the past 16 months and that now as we emerge from this pandemic, that they might be safe and continue to safeguard those in our community. Give thanks, God, for all those who throughout this community serving in Waukegan and this greater community have been able to help those who are sick. And we ask this blessing on all of them and those who are present in this city council in this day. In God's name, amen.
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 Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is due to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. For those of you who went to Juneteenth this weekend, it was a wonderful and educational celebration. I want to thank Alderman Bolton was part of it and we have Ms. England in the back who was also part of it. We'd also like to read a proclamation for Juneteenth.
Proclamation. June 19th is Juneteenth in Waukegan, whereas the United States is made up of people from every nation who are declared equal, not only in freedom but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization. And whereas, on New Year's Day, January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then, thenceforward, and forever free, and paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States and emancipating nearly four million African Americans held as slaves. And whereas, word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed by two and one-half years to June 19th, 1865, in reaching authorities and enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas, leading to the naming and celebration of Juneteenth. And whereas, the city of Waukegan celebrates our diversity and unity by taking part in and promoting Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day, Black Independence Day, Jubilee Day, and Freedom Day. And whereas, the city of Waukegan realizes the weight of Juneteenth and pledges to continue the work of equity and justice while recognizing the human capacity for healing and hope across our community and beyond. And whereas, this year's celebration of Juneteenth was made more special by the recognition of its importance and significance in our history by now being established as both a state and federal holiday. And whereas, after over one year of global pandemic lockdown, Juneteenth also highlights the beginning of an in-person summer season of celebration and the reopening of many Waukegan businesses. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021, as Juneteenth to recognize the historic and ongoing contributions of African Americans in our city and beyond, and encourage all residents to respect and honor our diverse community, help eradicate systemic racism, and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness. Adopted this 21st day of June, 2021.
Thank you, clerk. On a sad note, North Chicago's past mayor Bobby Thompson passed away. He was mayor for 13 years, saved the school district from running out of money, oversaw the construction of their water facility, and most notably lobbied to keep the naval station at Great Lakes from being closed when the Defense Department was scaling back on training facilities. So please reach out to the family. Fireworks will be July 4th at 9:30 at the lakefront. The public budget meeting will be held July 1st at the Jane Addams Center at 6:00 PM, which is Bowen Park. With the warm weather comes what we call roost burglaries. A roost burglary, as you know, is a distraction that they get you to the front door and get you outside and then burglarize you. So be aware that it's happening. There's been a couple of cases already, so just keep that in mind. There will be power outages in the fourth ward starting on this Thursday, 6/24 through Tuesday, 6/29 around the CLC construction. COVID shots will be given Saturday, June 26 at 202 South Genesee Street for those 12 years and older. Those of you having events through the city need to get special permits. You need to pay for the application fee and provide a certificate of insurance. There are no exceptions. It applies to everyone. Exciting. Felicia Stansel from our own Waukegan BMX on York House Road is going to Tokyo 2021 Olympics.
Wow.
What an accomplishment. A couple of upcoming events are Girls of Character Free Community Event on August 7th from 10:00 to 3:00. I have flyers up here if you need it. And Black Lives Matter is having a block party, a business block party, on August 28th at the BLM Building on Madison Street. Again, I have brochures up here if you need to see them. And that concludes Mayor's comments. There is no resolutions, proclamations, or presentations, so audience time.
All right. We are going to go into audience time. You have three minutes. It will be timed by Ms. Jane Ferry. I'm stretching out to get here. All right. Thank you all for coming in. And the first one that we have tonight will be Kathy Charity.
Hello again. My name is Kathy Charity. I'm at 929 McAllister. And first of all, I would like to say good evening, Ms. Mayor, City Council, and guests. But I would like to congratulate you and Taylor on your win as mayor for the city of Waukegan. Now, we did go over at the 520 Public Works and Infrastructure. That was part of my agenda, was the ordinance speeding and all that. So I'm going to circle back around to that since we discussed it. So I'm just going to continue what I'm going to say. To the chief and Police Department, I'm sure the department's hands are tied with many things within the city of Waukegan, and I commend you for what you do. But every neighborhood still needs a neighborhood policeman. A lot of mental health issues are on the rise. But I also want to thank the officers for what they do because a lot of them are experienced when it comes to mental health constituents. I have a daughter who have mental health issues and it is very hard. Illinois just passed the SB 1970 law, Senate bill regarding mental illness, right here. And this law is for hospitals to share information with people who are hospitalized with schizophrenia and things like that, so they can assure that these patients get the safety that they need once they're released out into the community. So it's very important that officers know about this. Last but not least, back in 2019, I don't know who the police chief was, if he's still the police chief now, but I did come up here because I have a grandson who's deaf of hard of hearing and he purchased his license. This is the card. So when an officer pulls over a person who's deaf of hard of hearing, it's very important if the officer don't know if he's deaf or not, that the person in the car has to show him why he's pulling him over so he can point to the picture whether he's in jail, he needs to go to jail, if he's speeding or anything, or if he has to go to hospital or anything. It's very important that officers know this. So if the person in the car tried to grab it, they won't think he's grabbing for something. I don't know how Waukegan wants to do it, if he slowly wants to hold it or do like this to let the officers know that he's deaf. Because we need to take care of our deaf community. There are a lot of people here who need assistance so they can assimilate into this community. And that's about it. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Charity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charity.
When you need it. Sure.
Mr. Clyde McLemore. Welcome.
That's a great idea.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Been a long time since we've been together, you know, since I've been here. Just wanted to know that during the pandemic, we as Black Lives Matter have became neighbors. We are around the corner at 216 West Madison. If you haven't stopped by, I ask you to please come by, see what we doing. We have a community center. We have computer labs. We have mentorship classes. If you haven't stopped by, just come by and take a look. I'm there every day from, I'm usually there from 11:00 to 7:00. As the mayor said, growing up, y'all know I've only been here 25 years, too long. But growing up, I looked forward to something. I used to always go to the empathy eight on 43rd and Hoston, and that was the Black Expo. I always went to the Black Expo every year. My family always took me there. And you know, with the summer just coming and we coming out, so we have a lot of businesses that I like to showcase Afro-American and brown businesses here in Lake County that don't have a storefront, nothing like that. So what I want, I came up with this idea of a Black Expo here in Lake County. And I asked people, because I've only been here 25 years, and I asked anybody, have they ever had one here? And they said, no, they ain't. What? You never had a Black Expo? Well, we're going to have one. August 28th is the mayor announced that we're going to have one. I am going through the procedures of getting a special event because I want to have it outside where you could walk through and everything. But if it rain, anything like that, like I said, 216 West Madison is big enough. We got two floors. You could come in. We could have it right inside the building there. I just want to invite you, if you have not been there, please stop by. If you're the alderman of that area or anything like that, I haven't seen you, stop in, see what it's like. Thank y'all for letting me talk.
Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Ms. Margaret Carrasco.
Good evening. I just want to share with our taxpayers of Waukegan a FOIA request that I submitted on June 15th. In light of what I see, many unanswered questions and issues exist still in the city of Waukegan. A copy of all the emails, phone calls, on computers, laptops, work phones, cell phones, from May 1st, 17th, 2017 to May 4, 2021 for Sam Cunningham. A list of all payroll and vendor checks, CDBA checks, CDBG checks, including manual checks containing the word Cunningham. Any and all letters, emails sent to the Illinois Liquor Commission and Illinois Gaming from May 1st, 2017 to May 4, 2021. List of all checks issued by CDBG for all of their grant and federal programs, including the COVID-funded. The name on the check who was issued, the date, the amount, the funding source, and a copy of all applications that have been submitted for funding, whether they're selected or not. Lots of complaints and issues in this entire department. A copy of any and all licenses, permits, including business, liquor, and construction for the years 2017 through 21 for the following businesses: Green Town on the Rocks, CYOC, Cap Catering, CYOC Bar and Lounge. And I pose a question to legal counsel. How could it be that Cap Catering, when you check with the Illinois Business Search, the name doesn't exist with no business license, when I check with the Illinois Liquor Commissioner, there's no liquor license for this? Folks, this is just the tip of the iceberg, okay? This is illegal. And so I want to ask if that's criminal. I don't know. What options are there? A list of all liquor license that Alderman Kirkwood has voted on, the date and name of the business and reflect his vote, if his vote was a yay, a nay, or a pass, from May 1st, 2017 through 21. And in the event that he did vote on a liquor license, once again, legal counsel, would he be disqualified to continue on as an alderman? Next. List the rate of pay, number of hours worked for each Waukegan employee working the entrance booth on Seahorse Drive on June 6th and June 13th. Lot of issues there. I have a city sticker. And on my city sticker, just in the very top, I have a piece of tape on it. It's stuck, it's adhered to the window. And the officer stated that just because of fact that I had a little piece of tape on there, that I had to pay the $10 to come in, that it didn't qualify. Lastly, a copy of all police cam video squad notes on May 22nd from our darling little officer who refused five times.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco.
Take a report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jose Guzman.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Jose Guzman. I'm just here to invite everybody for our Fourth of July festival down at the Waukegan Harbor. Since I've owned Dockside Dogs for the last, what, eight, nine years, I've been putting on a band free of charge, inviting everybody to come down here. Bring your picnic baskets, your coolers, and everything. Everything's free, okay? Ladies and gentlemen, come down there, listen to music, have fun. But I encourage everybody to come down early. There's a massive amount of people that show up, and obviously you're probably going to have to park really far away. So my suggestion is to show up. Before I owned Dockside Dogs, the city of Waukegan used to fork out the bill. The previous mayor or council decided that there was no more funding for it, and they stopped it one year prior to I owned it. And when I took over, I decided, no, this was a tradition, and I had to bring it back. So unfortunately, last year with COVID-19, I could not have it. But this year I am, and bigger and better than all. So it starts at 5:00 PM and ends at 10:00. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Brother Blanks.
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. First of all, stand congratulations to you, Mayor. I hadn't had a chance to do that on your victory here and your new position. And second of all, I really appreciate the city acknowledging Juneteenth, the symbolic gesture with the proclamation and everything. I think it's good. And also, in the spirit of Juneteenth and everything that's being done symbolically, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind right now is partnering and contracting with the Waukegan Housing Authority on the $45 million affordable housing project to assure the diversity on the job site, reflect the taxpayers of the community. I would like to see the symbolic gesture that's been made with the proclamation, and I spoke with, you know, I spoke previously with the mayor. I would like to see that carried through to some of the construction sites or projects that may be coming up for the city. As we ride through some of the streets and ride through some of the streets of the city and some of the construction work that we see that is going on, we see there's still much room for improvement in that area of diversity for all on these projects. So I just want to say that whatever we can do as an organization to aid and assist to carry that spirit of, to carry that spirit of Juneteenth, because nothing helps liberation and independence for young men and women of the community than having a decent paying job and opportunities that makes the difference between them standing on the streets and being gainfully employed and being able to be proud to take care of their families. So whatever we can do to help carry that symbolic gesture that was done tonight with some substance for jobs opportunity, we're willing to work with the city to see what we can do to make those things happen. Once again, Mayor, congratulations, and I thank you all for the time and the attention today.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. It's been a long time. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Thank you, clerk. Moving on to our consent agenda. So is there any items that people want to pull out?
Mayor, I believe there may have been a fix to item H. This isn't to have it pulled out, but I think that some of the wording.
Correct. Item H was heard in the Finance Committee meeting, and it says on the agenda that the amount is not to exceed $44,457.95 annually. Annually should be taken out. This is the three-year contract amount of $44,457.95.
Great. Thank you.
So it should read, motion to authorize a three-year contract with B&amp;B Networks for the city of Waukegan's maintenance of the VOIP phone system for the amount not to exceed
Period.
Period. Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
Anything, anybody want to pull anything out? We're good? Okay. Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, June 7th, 2021. Can I have a first and a second on that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. First by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
You're doing a consent agenda?
Voice vote.
Now, we were doing them separately. Can we do them all as one?
Consent is done, all as one, yes.
Okay. So I'll just read them all then. Motion to adopt an ordinance approving the Sustainability Plan as a supplement to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This matter was heard on June 7th in the Community Development Committee meeting. It was actually voted on tonight. Motion to authorize the proper city officials to renew an existing contract with ML Staffing for a not-to-exceed amount of $60,000. Out-of-line item 695169824438. This matter was heard in the June 21 Finance and Purchasing Committee meeting. Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to pay the 2021-22 Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab membership assessment fee of $128,600. This payment will be made from line item 10608524436. This matter was heard in the June 21 Finance and Purchasing Committee meeting. Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to remit payment to the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy at the College of DuPage for the purpose of training newly-hired and non-certified officers for a not-to-exceed amount of $26,149.20. This matter was heard in the June 21, 21 Finance and Purchasing Committee meeting. Item F, motion to approve the 2021 Tourism Community Marketing Partnership in the amount of $31,500 with the Lake County Illinois Convention and Visitors Bureau. This matter was heard in the June 21 Finance and Purchasing Committee meeting. Item G, motion to follow the recommendation of the proposed insurance program and authorize the execution of policy agreements providing workman's compensation, auto liability, public officials, employment practices coverage for the 21-22 program year for a total of $1,755,139. This matter was heard in the June 21, 21 Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting. Item H, motion to authorize a three-year contract with B&amp;B Networks for the city of Waukegan's maintenance of the VOIP phone system for an amount not to exceed $44,457.95. This matter was heard in the June 21, 2021 Finance and Purchasing Committee meeting. Item I, motion to authorize the Finance Department to execute a contract with independent contractor Donald Schultz Municipal Resource Group, Inc., for the purpose of temporary staffing for the amount not to exceed $114,400 for a time period not to exceed beyond December 2nd, 2021. This matter was heard in the June 21, 21 Finance and Purchasing Committee meeting. Item J, motion to authorize the CDBG director to enter into a housing rehabilitation contract with Beeline or Lean Surfaces, Inc., and the homeowners of 115 Lake Street. Funding for this item, or line item, is 245550224445 for an amount not to exceed $25,450. This matter was heard in the June 21 Finance and Purchasing Committee meeting. Item K, motion to approve a regular payroll dated June 18, 2021 in the amount of $1,646,297.23. Item L, motion to approve vendor payments dated June 21, 2021 in the amount of $1,760,466.06. Item M, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, elected officials and civil service stipend, comp time payout, and police holiday buyback dated June 18, 2021 in the amount of $12,708.15. Before we take the vote on this, I do want to explain to residents that you'll see some of these are dated, that they were heard in a committee meeting, and now, you know, they were heard tonight on finance. We have started a new policy here at City Hall where things that are heard in committee tonight are generally not voted on for another two weeks, with the exception of things in finance that have to be paid immediately. So like our bill runs and that kind of thing. But anything that went through Community Development or Public Works, you will hear it in committee tonight, but that will not be voted on for two weeks. And that is in order to give the community a chance, or the aldermen to go back and talk to the community, or for the community to hear about it that way. Before it was, whatever was heard in committee was voted on that same evening, and people were not always aware because it happened quickly. So that's why you'll see the dates that look a little bit different, depending what committee it came out of. Okay, for that clarification, can I still have the motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Turner?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you. Reports and communications, the treasurer's report for me. Anything you want to say? No, okay, okay.
Should be in all your packets. It's certainly available at my office and the clerk's office. And if it isn't on the website today, it will be within a day or two. Any questions, call my office.
There being no old business, new business. Item A, motion to approve a resolution approving the continued engagement of Jay Witherspoon Legal and Mediation Services in the amount of $65,000 through end of fiscal year 2021-22. Can I have a motion to approve? Or any questions?
Can you talk about what's different this year from last with regards to this contract?
So basically, we've always had legal services for FOIA requests. We are now trying to go into doing them in-house. But because we have not had a setup for that, we are having her for the remainder of this year, and then we will be doing them on our own. So that's basically, this is just through the end of our fiscal year. Does that answer your?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Second.
It was already made by me and Mozio, I believe.
Okay. Alderman Newsom, and second by Alderman Mozio. Item B. I'm sorry, roll call, please, I'm sorry.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Clerk. Item B, motion to approve a resolution approving a consultation agreement with RJ Harrison Associates in the amount of $87,000. Any questions to the motion?
Madam Mayor, I would like to hold this one line item over for further discussion.
Okay. Item eight, ordinances, there being none. Closing items, alderman time.
Thank you. Alderman Hayes.
This is alderman time?
Alderman Hayes.
It's the first time I'm first up, so getting a feel for it. Nothing other than just wishing a happy belated Father's Day to all the fathers in the community.
Thank you. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to thank everyone, you, Mayor, and all the aldermen that helped participate in making Juneteenth possible. It was a great event, and yes, we could use more collaborative efforts, but it was a great event, and I want to thank you all for supporting that, along with Sylvia England and the committee. And also want to thank those that supported on last Friday the cleanup, those that used it. And also want to thank Barwell Community for helping me collaborate that cleanup. And then, so now we have a second one scheduled this Saturday. The community on Bluff downtown will be cleaning up. You see that? And that will be Saturday, I believe, from 9 till 12. So look for that posting. And then also, I believe with Dr. Kirkwood, he's collaborating to help clean up all the wards with YCC. And they will be in the first ward this week and next week, cleaning our alleys. And then, I believe there was an announcement, there's a grant for small businesses. Make sure you all are taking advantage of that. Mayor, what number is it that they can call?
You can get in touch with Larissa and the CBGD. And I don't think they've actually started it yet, but please go and talk to her. There is $108,000 available.
Did you all hear that?
Did you all hear that? Okay. Larissa, you're here. Did I?
Yes, she is.
Include everything?
1-847. 599. 25. 30.
Thank you very much.
And I thank Catholic Charity for, if I could get that card about the deaf, I didn't know that. I really appreciate you sharing that with us. Also, Mr. Blanks, thank you for raising our awareness once again about diversity in hiring. That's true, I validate that. We need to improve in that area. Thank you so much. And when it comes to job opportunities. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Seager.
I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. It's been a long time. I'd like to see more people come in, give their opinions, and see if we can't, see if we can't come up with a solution. I've got something going on second ward. First, Operation Cleanup Sweep, Saturday, July 10. That will be done from 8:00 a.m. till 10:30 a.m. at 12th and Greenfield Avenue. We'll have a dumpster dropped off there and then picked up. I'm starting to go ahead and pass flyers through that, the southeast side of the ward, and then start working north and to the west. That's about it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio.
Pass.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to also have, say to all the fathers, sometimes you may not think you're thought of, but certainly as a father, you're the head of the household. And certainly, yesterday was a day that you should be honored in your home. Also, I'd like to say outstanding job to Ms. Sylvia England and her entire committee on Saturday. The job was outstanding. I did go to all of the sites, and certainly, as a city, we can improve on that for next year so that we can do some more venues. Also, in the fourth ward, on Thursday, we'll have the Neighborhood Watch Program in the Genesee area, starts at 6:00 to 7:00. Also, this Saturday, from 9 to 12, we'll be cleaning up, you know, historic Genesee from Grand Avenue to Franklin Avenue from 9 to 12. Refreshments will be served. Also, in that particular area, they started the Stop It, Don't Drop It, Keep Waukegan Clean campaign for the entire city of Waukegan. If you go around the city of Waukegan, you'll see trash, you know, around the city. We need to make our city clean. So those stop signs are available. You can look on the website. Also, YCC Alley Cleanup is continuing throughout the city. They finished up the Butrick area, Catalpa, cleaning out alleys on June 11 and June 18. They'll be in the first ward, certainly for the other aldermen. If you have alleys that need to be cleaned out, see Ms. Figaro, she will make sure you get signed up. They're doing an excellent job. Also, we will put together some more Operation Clean Sweep in the fourth ward. Also, you'll look on our Facebook, we'll set up the next ward meeting. Also, I want to encourage block parties in the fourth ward, make sure we fill out the necessary forms. Certainly during the pandemic, we need to get reacquainted and get acquainted with some of our new neighbors. Once again, we're only as good as our collective efforts. Let's continue to be proud of Waukegan and work together as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For those of you who were not here during the Public Works and Infrastructure Meeting, we had a rather interesting discussion around speeding, which we all know has been becoming epidemic across Waukegan, and wide-ranging discussion, solutions-oriented. And going forward, we will be taking additional interest in doing research in solutioning, right, to, or potential solutions to help mitigate speeding. In the sixth ward, I want to talk about neighborhood cleanliness, particularly after, on and after Trash Day. A lot of times, people are putting the trash in their cans, and I know we talk about this, every alderman talks about this, but we can't talk about it enough because the cleanliness of our environment, where we live, is very important. So remind yourselves that on Trash Day, try not to overfill your garbage cans. And when you bring your can in, if trash is blown out of your can or out of your neighbor's can, take the extra step. Make an effort to pick up trash that may be blowing, maybe it's collected in the street along the curb line. When you're traveling through the street, in the sixth ward, I travel the ward and I see large pieces of trash landing in the middle of the street. I stop and I pick that up. I would encourage you to do the same. Our code enforcement officers, you know, I've spoken previously, Josh was promoted to the Police Department. We do have a new code enforcement officer specific to the sixth ward who's in training now. He should be assigned and out working this week or next. My understanding is training is going very well. We're doing a dumpster drop on Tuesday, July 13. It's going to be at 7:41 Glen Flora. That's in front of the Dollar Tree store that is just east of, like a block and a half east of Jackson Street. Again, July 13, it's a Tuesday, and that will be out there between 8:30 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. So we're doing three of these drops in the sixth ward this year. I did the first one down at, on Franklin Street in front of North School. That was the only one that's going to happen or happened on a weekend, on a Saturday. The next two will be on weekdays, this one on Glen Flora, and the next one I'll put up underneath the power lines sometime. I think we're going to do that in August. Sixth Ward Meeting, I'm tentatively scheduling that for July 17. I don't have any details because my intention is to hold it outdoors in Upton Park. Barring that, I'll either hold it at some other location, or we'll do another Zoom meeting, but stand by for details on the sixth ward meeting that will be held on Saturday, July 17. I am excited to announce, well, first let me offer a reminder too then about my sixth ward rewards program as an additional incentive to contact the police if you become aware of any criminal activity in the sixth ward. And if you are a good witness and help to garner an arrest and conviction, I'll give you $1,000 out of my pocket. That's not tax money, that's Keith Turner money. Along with that, I am excited to announce that I am, I'm going to hire or offer an opportunity for residents in the sixth ward who are recent high school graduates or college students. I'll pay you $10 an hour to help me go around and clean up the sixth ward. Again, that's not taxpayer dollars, so you don't see it in the budget that comes out of my pocket, and it's available to, at this point, residents of the sixth ward. I may expand that and take folks from others, depending on the interest and how much work we have to do. Lastly, if you will, if you're interested, please call, text, or email me with your email address to get on my email list for occasional informational emails and invitations to our ward meetings and that kind of thing. My email address is keith@keitheturner.com. First name at first name, middle initial, last name, dot com, right? And my phone number, of course, is 847-445-3788. I'd be honored to hear your observations, critiques, and information. So please call me whenever I'm needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, I want to offer my condolences to the Thompson family and also any Waukegan family that has lost a loved one in the last couple of weeks. A belated happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there. I want to encourage people to get out and register to vote. You probably won't be hearing this for a while, but I'm going to start right now. We need to get as many people registered as possible so that our voice can be heard downstate. Also, or the last thing is that the seventh ward will have an Operation Clean Sweep. It's going to be Tuesday, June 29, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And it's going to be located in the north parking lot of the Timberlake Plaza. That's the plaza on Lewis Avenue and Sunset Road. And that's pretty much all I had. Oh, I wanted to thank also the audience participants. Thank you very much for your comments. I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I join Alderman Rivera in encouraging people to register to vote. I'm assuming the people that care enough to come to City Council are already registered to vote, but just in case you're not. We had horrific turnout, in my opinion, for the last election. It was less than 10%. And we need to do everything we can to get people involved in the process. I agree, our voice downstate matters, but it matters just as much what happens here in this room. I believe your daily lives are more affected by those of us up here than the people downstate or the people in Washington. And, not that they don't matter, but I think your day-to-day lives are affected more by what happens in your own community. So I agree that we need to do everything we can to get people involved in the process. I had a ward meeting last Thursday at Station 5. I'd like to thank the police, the police, the fire department for hosting it. It turned out really nice. They did have a fire while we were there, unfortunately, not at the fire department, but they had to leave. So that was a little bit of excitement in the middle of it, but it was very well attended. I thank the mayor and the other city officials who came and all of the staff that was there to help me pull it off. There were lots of good questions, lots of good answers, I think. People were quite happy with how it went. I encourage everyone up here to host a ward meeting if you can, to let your residents, you know, see you face-to-face and ask questions and get their concerns addressed. So I will be having a dumpster also this coming, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, the 26th, from 7:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. And it will be in the parking lot in front of the Midlane Hotel. It's now called the Lotus Suites. So it's right off of York House. There's a real nice pull-in, pull-out situation there. So that'll be on Saturday, the 26th. And then my next one will be on Thursday, July 15, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that one is at the Journey Church on York House Road, which is just a little bit west of the intersection of York House and McCree. So again, it's a real nice in-and-out situation. So everyone can get rid of their stuff. So that's all I have. Should I make a motion to adjourn, Mayor?
Can I just say one quick thing?
Excuse me, Mayor, I have one other thing I totally forgot. May I?
Absolutely.
I have a group of teenagers from the first ward that wants to volunteer for other wards in cleanup if you are interested in extra assistance. The name of the group is called Love Everywhere. And matter of fact, in the third ward, they just told me today, they want to clean up the lakefront. So, love everywhere. Please let me know if you need help. Thank you.
I just want to make two quick things, because normally I don't comment after alderman time. One is I want to remind people, starting on July 1, at the commuter trains, the parking meters will be changed over on, starting July 1. So remember that if you're not prepared for it. Second of all, I just want to really thank my staff, the aldermen, the clerk. We've kind of come in here at record pace. As I said to you, you saw some of the committees have been changed. We also are now meeting with the aldermen two at a time every other Thursday so that we can ask questions, they can ask questions before we come to council, which is what is making your meeting shorter. And also, the agendas are now going out on Thursdays instead of Friday evenings, thanks to the clerk's office and her hard work. I'm telling you, it's been a rough time. We're working through it, but we have an amazing staff, elected officials, and we're here for you. And like I said, this is probably our record meeting time that we're getting out of here, but I want to thank everyone. Motion to adjourn, Alderman Kirkwood, second. Alderman Rivera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.